For how our board is going to interact with the superintendent to talk about the progress we're making towards student outcomes, very much looking forward to that. And without further ado, I will turn that back over to President Hampson so we can get started on our election process.
We now have reached the consent portion of today's agenda. May I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
The approval of the consent agenda has been moved by Vice President Hersi and seconded by Director Rivera Smith. Do directors have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Director Harris?
Thank you, President Hampson. I would like to remove item number six, the annual approval of schools pursuant to WAC, yada, 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 the C-SIP process. Thank you.
May I have a revised motion for the consent agenda as amended?
May. Give me one moment. I move for approval of the consent agenda as amended.
This motion has been made by Vice President Hersi and seconded by Director Rivera Smith. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So item number six is removed from the consent agenda. We're doing that now, correct, Ellie? Administrative Code 180-16-220. This came through Student Services Curriculum and Instruction on November 9th and was recommended for consideration. Approval of this item would approve each school within the district as having a school improvement plan that is data-driven, promotes a positive impact on student learning, and includes the continuous improvement process as required by WAC 180-16-220. This has been updated since introduction. Director Hersi? I mean Director Harris, I'll turn it over to you for your questions.
Thank you. I referenced in the intro portion of this bar that we had just received the website link to the 104 schools C-SIP plans after having been promised previously to that. They're hard to find on the web. We have a website where they are all in one place. I confess that I only got through about 50 of them, unlike years past where I've looked at every darn one of them. Whole lot of cutting and pasting, and this year, of all years, I will forgive staff for that because of their workload, because of return to school. But I would very much like to see us amend this resolution to put the website address there for issues of transparency and trust. And I would like also, potentially, if we have bars that have website addresses that assist the public and indeed we mere board members, that we add that as well in the future for transparency's sake.
Okay, let me make sure I understand first. Let me go to Director, ask for a motion on the item separately.
Is it cool if I just say so moved, or do I need to read out the whole thing? All right, I'll read out the whole thing. I move that the school board approve each school within the district as having a school improvement plan that is data-driven, promotes a positive impact on student learning, and includes a continuous improvement process as required by WAC 180-16-220.
This item has been separately moved by Vice President Hersi and seconded by Director Rivera Smith. And I see Dr. Pedrosa coming to the podium to address this question. I'm not clear, Director Harris, if it's a question or a proposed amendment, but let me let Dr. Pedrosa address it first, if that's helpful.
So, good afternoon, everybody. This is Dr. Consey Pedrosa. I also have Executive Director Mike, Dr. Mike Storowski online to address this. So when we brought this for intro last time, we talked about all of the request changes. So what I'm asking you, Director Harris, is are you requesting that the link to all of the C-SIPS be incorporated into this bar? Is that the request?
It is my request. Thank you so much. So I guess that's an amendment to this bar from Robert's rules.
So I would just ask staff, Chief Counsel Narver, General Counsel Narver, and Ms. Wilson Jones, is that an administrative amendment that we can make without a amendment to the actual bar? This is just an actual link?
I'll try and stand back. We don't update bars. The bar gets posted. That's not where we update it. We hear the concern about transparency and having that information available. The solution isn't going to be to amend the bar, though, but to make sure that there's access and information available to the public on the website to get to the C-SIPS. But amending a bar that's already brought into action before the board isn't an administrative action that we take. So that would be the way to address your concern rather than proposing an amendment to the bar.
You all stand down. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Did you have anything to add, Dr. Pedrosa?
No, I just also just want to give some information to both the new board members that are here, just really quickly. And Dr. Storowski can speak to this, that one thing I will share is I'm actually really glad that people are actually reading the C-SIP as intended. So I just want to share that over the last several years, that is work that we've been doing to make sure that the C-SIP has been a living, breathing document in the system, that it's aligned to the goals, it's aligned to our strategic plan, that there's alignment. And we're actually continuing to have these conversations. For example, I'll give an example of like regarding the guardrails around discipline. Now we're talking about how do we ensure we have goals within that, within the C-SIPS moving forward. So I just want to share with the two new board members and all of the board that this is really, in the past, the C-SIP was a compliance document. And I will say through Dr. Storowski's leadership and many of the work of the department and several departments and schools and school teams, that has now become a continuous improvement, true continuous improvement document. It is a live and breathing document. It gets updated not just in the fall, but again in the spring. And BLTs, Building Leadership Teams, and our union partners are key constituents and part of that work. So I just wanted to share that as additional information, and we're really proud of that. And as we have our new goals and guardrails, we're going to continue those continuous improvement efforts. So I just wanted to state that for the record, for all of you, and we're really proud of where we are, and we have still more work to do. But thank you for, that you've read them, and I think it's important that everyone read them. I just wanted to make sure that we honored the people that have done a lot of work behind that. So I just wanted to state that. Thank you.
And Dr. Storowski, did you want to add anything to that? And then Director Sardhu has a question.
Not too much more to add than that.
You're unmuted, Michael.
Can you hear me now?
He's not. We can't hear him.
Mike, can you, and Dr. Storowski?
I think he isn't, he was unmuted, and he just muted himself, but we couldn't hear him.
I, I'm speaking now, can anyone hear me?
I see you talking. Yes, I know, that's why I'm saying, I see you talking. Give us a moment, Dr. Storowski. While we're waiting for you to be audible, maybe I'll let Doctor, I mean Director Sardhu ask her question.
Okay.
Thank you, Director Hampson. This is Director Michelle Sardhu. I'm African-American, I have curly hair, I'm wearing a maroon-colored shirt and tortoiseshell glasses today. I would like the definition of C-SIP. I think somebody's saying bar, like the place you go for drinks. And then I think it's important that until we all learn the acronyms, and also for our studio audience, that for our benefit, that we begin to break down some of these acronyms so that we can all gain an understanding. Thank you.
Is Dr. Storowski, can we hear you? Yet? No. So I'll go through just a little bit. So for everyone here, BAR is our Board Action Report. That is the document that we use to bring forth any policy amendments, changes, or new policies and revisions. And in addition, the C-SIP, and it's actually outlined in the policy in the draft bar underneath. It's a continuous school improvement plan, and we use a C-SIP model, but continuous school improvement plan is required by the state of Washington. We need to update those annually. We actually update more than once. We try to work with them at a regular process, make sure that everything's aligned and that this is the living, breathing document for schools moving forward. So I hope that explains those two questions.
Thank you for helping me to understand these new terms.
You're welcome. All right, I don't know if we can hear Dr. Storowski at all yet? Nope? Yes? Do you have any comments? I didn't see, no? Okay. Questions? All right. Thank you, Director Sardhu, for that reminder. We do try to remind ourselves at times, but we get sloppy and we forget to spell those things out, which is why I stumbled through Washington Administrative Code. I guess it's important. I don't know if it gives you a whole lot more additional information, but it's a little more informative. So yes, appreciate that reminder, and maybe we can do packets, or at least, directors, you don't have, you don't have a computer either. I'm going to let Michelle use mine. Can you share your computer with? Okay. So that you have access to the, because we don't print the full board action reports for each item, we look at them online. And we should have told you that in advance. So my apologies for that. Okay, so I think, are there any other questions on this item? Director Harris? Other directors, are we good to?
I'm inclined to move forward to a vote. I intend to vote yes.
Thank you very much, Director Harris. The roll call, please.
Director Rivera Smith? Director Sardhu?
There was an aye? Director Song-Murray? Director Harris? Director Hersi?
Aye.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
President Hampson?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Wilson-Jones. Okay, drumroll. We will now move to the election of board officers. Thank you. Like that. I waited, I wasn't expecting that. I expect literal interpretations of all my statements from now on. I will now turn the meeting over to Superintendent Jones, who will preside over the election process as the Secretary of the Board. Take it away.
All right, thank you so much. Before I open the floor to nominations, I would like to review the election process. For each officer position, president, vice president, and member-at-large, I will take nominations from the board. A second is not required for the nomination, but can be made. After all the nominations are made for a position, there will be an opportunity for directors to provide comment before voting. After comments have been concluded, the board will vote for each position in the order the nominations were made. By law and board policy, the voting will be conducted by a roll call vote. The voting will conclude at the point when one nomination gets four or more votes. After the president has been elected, we will move on to the vice president and then the member-at-large. In summary, for each position, there will be nominations, then discussion, then voting. At the conclusion of the election process for all three positions, each new officer will have an opportunity to provide remarks. Okay, because this will be the only time, I would like to have that gavel in front of me, can you please pass that forward, please? Symbolic, right? Okay, so here we go. Another drumroll, please. Nominations are now in order for the office of president.
I would like to wholeheartedly ask you to pass that gavel on down to Brandon Hersi, current vice president, and nominate him with all my support and honor to do so for the office of president.
Thank you. Are there other nominations for president?
Oh, I'll second that, even though it's not required. I would still like to second.
We are slightly out of order. We don't need those seconds, but this is fantastic. You've been affirmed, sir. Any other nominations for president? Okay, if there are no more nominations, I close the nomination for president. Would any directors like to make any comments at this time?
I, I think that it's often that I think the expectation is a vice president moves up into presidency, but it doesn't always happen that way, but I think that Brandon has definitely exemplified a president in the opportunity where he leads meetings and brings us together and is really the voice of our board so often already that it does seem very fitting and exciting that he's been nominated for this. That's my support.
Thank you.
I was thinking on the way over here in my car about just what we were doing tonight and all the things, and I started to get, you know, in thinking about what nominations there may be, what possibilities there may be. And I started to get a little bit emotional thinking about having a black male educator and a public school educator and a black male former Seattle Public School student as the people that we all are going to follow into this continued work. And it is my honor to serve with you both.
It is my pleasure and indeed an honor, the third-year nomination. I wasn't quick enough on the uptake. You've shown some extraordinary leadership, but most importantly, what you've shown is collaboration and huge listening skills in putting our students number one. Number one. And no doubt, we will disagree in the future, but one of the things that I have immensely appreciated working with you is the civility and the listening and the brainstorming and the pinging and bouncing ideas off of each other and leveraging those ideas. And that's a beautiful thing, and I look forward to seeing you up there in the middle doing great things, and I look forward to giving you an elegantly hard time, because that's part of the job. And it's, we're all better for that. So thank you for being willing to do this. Thank you as well for giving up your passion as a school teacher. I only feel sorry for your former students and the students that are not getting to learn from you this, this year or years in the future. I have absolutely zero doubt that you'll be back in a classroom, no question about it, and, you know, the folks that are getting the benefit of your direction in your union political director job, they can thank us for that.
Seeing none, Ms. Wilson-Jones, please call the roll for the vote for Director Hersi.
Director Harris? Vice President Hersi?
Can I have a second to think about it? Aye.
Director Rankin? Director Rivera Smith? Director Sardhu? Director Song-Murray?
Aye.
President Hampson?
Aye.
The nomination of Director Hersi is approved unanimously.
Congratulations on your election as president, Director Hersi. President Hersi. Okay, nominations are now in order for the office of vice president. Are there any nominations for vice president?
I'd also nominate Director Rivera Smith for vice president.
Nominate Director Hampson?
I like seconding. Second.
Okay, are there any other nominations for vice president? If there are no more nominations, I close nominations for vice president. Would any directors like to make any comments at this time? Director Sardhu?
Do we get to ask questions? No questions?
Comments?
Comments. Hmm, well then, I guess, is there a question period or only a comment period?
I can get a reading on that, but my direction say comments.
Okay. I guess my comment about this particular situation is, in my mind, what I'm questioning is what would be the benefit of having Director Hampson be vice president? What would be the benefit of having Director Rivera Smith? Wait, is that right? Okay. I always got your name confused with Vivian's opponent. What would be the benefit? And again, this is about continuation of leadership and processes that would benefit in either direction. So I'm not the kind of person that just willy-nilly votes for anybody. I think there needs to be a sound reason and rationale for whoever we choose to be on the leadership, and since we can't ask questions, that's, that's where I'll leave it.
Director, Director President Hersi?
Thank you. Having served with both Director Rivera Smith and Director Hampson on the executive committee over the past year, I think both of their leaderships are critical to the health of this district. And I think that it says something that these two powerful women have once again stepped up in ways that were unnecessary to serve this educational system that provides the most important. that provides the most important thing to all of our children. And I would be happy to see either one of them in this seat, but what is critical for me as we are making this transition to student-focused outcomes governance, the relationships that Director Hampson has forged with the Council for Great City Schools, not to mention almost every other institution in the city of Seattle and beyond. I believe that in this moment, continuity is critical. And the position of continuing to work with that through line of the work that has already been started under her leadership will also be a benefit to our students. That being said, I look forward to an opportunity to work with Director Rivera Smith in a leadership capacity again in some way, shape, or form if it does not work out. Um, and that for me is why I have proudly nominated Director Hampson.
Director Rankin.
Thank you. Um, you know, looking at the job descriptions of President and Vice President, they could be somewhat symbolic. Basically, the President runs the meetings and it could start in and there. And is this, is the spokesperson on behalf of the board? Not to say on their own, but as we as a body, they're the spokesperson. But as we've seen, uh, through committee work and through, um, the last couple of years, the, I would say, the President and the Vice President work, you know, as we work with different staff through, um, committees, the President and the Vice President probably have the most influence in confirming, setting the agendas and, and working with the superintendent. And, um, as we are making this, I'm gonna sort of somewhat echo your comments, making the shift in student outcomes-focused governance and knowing the tremendous amount of time and commitment um, that Director Hampson has, has put in. Um, and, uh, for wanting to, wanting to make sure that we get through that and really ground it in our work and, um, establish it very firmly going forward. I think, you know, when there are changes, it's so easy for things to just totally fall apart once a few individuals are shifted. Um, I really believe in this work, uh, student, uh, student outcomes-focused governance. I think it's high time. And, um, I think that, uh, Brandon as our President would be very well-served to have, um, Director Hampson supporting, continuing that work and getting it really established in how we operate as a board.
Uh, I don't recall if I managed to tell everyone this, but the agreement with the students is that we would go out there at six to talk to them in case anyone's worried about making sure that we get to speak with them. So, because if we're hearing that, it's all good energy, I think, out there. And we'll be excited to go out and, and speak with them.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification. Uh, Director Song Maritz, comments, please.
Yes, I'm, I am very excited to nominate Director Rivera Smith for the position of Vice President. Now, I've listening to Director Hersi and Director Sargu's comments about the importance of continuity of leadership. I do think that Director Rivera Smith represents that as she currently serves on the Executive Committee. And, um, a personal observation is that she does attend the com- all the committee meetings, including the meetings that she is not a member of the committee. And I think having that kind of lay of the land is very important in serving the leadership of our board. Um, you know, in the same vein that I'm thrilled to have voted in support of, uh, Director Hersi as our President, um, Director Rivera Smith is the first Latina on our school board. And it's in that spirit that I think that having her in our leadership team would also be very exciting. Um, and on a personal note, um, I'm a PTSA President for a school in Director Rivera Smith's district and, uh, have a excellent working relationship with her. And she has truly impressed me with her ability to listen to the community, to engage parents, teachers, staff, and students. And I know that she does her homework. She shows up to meetings, um, with answers to our questions. And, um, I'm really excited to work with her on this board. And I think our board would really benefit from her leadership.
Director Harris.
Thank you. Um, this is very difficult for me. I think the world of both women's intellect and work ethic without question. Collaboration and communication skills, however, I have differences with. And I have significant differences with the fact that this last year we've had harassment, intimidation, and bullying complaint lodged. And we have spent over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And it has been appealed to the Supreme, excuse me, the Superior Court. Now, I don't argue with anyone's due process rights whatsoever. But when I think of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and the gut-wrenching difficulties that this board and senior staff have been put through, I, I cannot vote for Director Hampson. And, and I'm sorry to say that, it breaks my heart. But I was elected to do what I think best and my fiduciary responsibility. And I take absolutely zero pleasure in putting this on the record. Thank you.
Director Rivera Smith.
Thank you. Um, I, I don't, I don't want to make this a comparison between me and Chandra. Chandra could do the job. We know Chandra's an amazing leader and can, and can do Vice President in her sleep. I, I think this is more of, you know, I'm excited that Vivian is nominating me because I'm excited to do it. I would, I would love to. I think that, um, I have learned a lot watching these two in Executive Committee. And I have been there and I do go to all the committee meetings. I don't know if that's more shameful or bragging, but I, you know, I, I like, I like to be involved. And I like to, to know, uh, the business that's going on to make educated votes and directions. And, um, I feel like I've definitely grown as a leader in my two years on the board. I, um, am excited, you know, especially with Brandon as President. I think we could do amazing stuff. I think that, uh, Director Hampson will always be there offering the support and guidance with even, you know, whether she's in the leadership job, you know, on the board or not. I mean, Executive Committee role. Um, and so I, I really, you know, again, like the, the job description for Vice President, right, is, what is it, like presiding meetings when the President's not there? For Vice President, that's, that's really the book. We know that's not it. We know that's not the job. That's in writing what it is. And it's so much more than that. And so, and it, I guess the beauty is that you make it what it is. You make what you need it to be and what's called for at the time. We're gonna do a superintendent search here, clearly, um, beginning of this, the first half of this year. And I know it's gonna take a lot of time and energy. And I'm, um, committed to doing that and working with that and bringing the board and community along in that process. If I have the honor of serving as Vice President or even without, obviously, as a board member, we're all gonna be doing that. But, but I, you know, I, I think that I, um, could be a great supporter and teammate for, uh, President Hersi and, um, bringing the voices we need to the table, working with staff who, you know, I, we have quite the honor to work with. Amazing staff you put together for us, Superintendent Jones. And yeah, so I guess that's my words for me. Um, I, I didn't, I didn't know who else would be running for this job. So I didn't know what to expect to make comparisons. I don't think we need to make comparisons. I think it's, it's about what we want to bring to it and the excitement we have for that, so. Uh, on to there, thank you.
Director Hampson.
So you get your questions answered. Uh, thank you for that, Director Rivera Smith. I, I, um, would also be fully supporting you for, for this role if I didn't feel an intense need to be a hundred percent sure that this work on student outcomes-focused governance gets done. And the lift that we have coming this year, starting next week, to truly and finally take advantage of this oper- of the, this truly once-in-a-lifetime opportunity we have to shift the focus of this district once and for all to students requires a level of, uh, work that because of the nature of how we can and cannot work together, it's very difficult to see what the, I certainly didn't know until I was President, what the role meant. And adding on to it and then working with our, our very slim, uh, staff to restructure how it is that we govern is a massive undertaking. And I'm, uh, it's really about my commitment to that work and wanting to see that through to this next year. Um, wanting to support President Hersi in that work with Council of Great City Schools and really solidifying that in all of our understanding and learning about how it is that we work together and govern together. Um, so, so that is my, uh, because I'm, I don't think any of us are looking to, to add ten times more to our, to our plates and it is a lot more. Um, but I, I do want to make sure I can backstop Brandon since there are times when I've, he's had to tag in for me when we have to be, I have to be in two places at once. And, uh, it feels like we just need that one additional year to finally nail this stuff down and be in a much greater place. I'm super excited about our work together as a, as a full board. And it's been a great, uh, past year as an Executive Committee with the three of us. Uh, and would absolutely can, uh, look forward to continuing to do that work this next year and then, um, step off and let somebody else take a turn.
Director Sargu.
So I will have to say that, um, I was not expecting, uh, what we all just witnessed. Um, and as everyone gets to know me, um, I'm not about titles. Um, I'm about getting the work done. And in any organization, um, what's concerning to me is that the President role turns over every year. How many corporations would be successful if the CEO role turned over every year? Um, I work for your King County government and I guarantee you, if our top leadership roles turned over every year, we would be not one of the best government, local governments in the nation. We would be one of the worst. So in listening to all of this, what I have, what I think I've heard, since I can't ask questions, and maybe that's something we need to change, is that student outcomes-focused governance is the priority, as it should be. Uh, if not that, what else? And if in fact, what I think I've heard, because I can't ask a question, is that Chandra and Brandon have been doing this work. I wasn't expecting this scenario and situation. So I'm trying to navigate my way through this. Um, and if I heard what I think I heard, we shouldn't, A, be switching Presidents, and we've already done it. And B, now that we've done it, does it make sense to re- in my mind, does it make sense to remove the leadership, to change the leadership team that has been working on this? I have no idea if, uh, Director Rivera Smith has been as intimately involved in this as I think I've heard Chandra and Brandon, uh, excuse me, uh, Director, I gotta remember to use titles, uh, Director Hampson and now President Hersi talk about. But you will never, ever hear me vote for something for the sake of joining the crowd. And what I'm, what I feel like is important is we ha- in any effective governing structure or organization, we need experience of leadership as well as continuity of leadership. And I feel like I'm in this position, like I'm back in high school, where I'm choosing who my most fa- I don't have a favorite on this board. I barely even know these people. I got sworn in yesterday. I don't, we, we have not been able to gather and determine who we are as individuals, much less who we are as colleagues. So I feel like it's unfortunate that as a new board member, I'm in this position without the opportunity to ask questions because of the rules. I feel like it's unfortunate that, yeah, I'm just gonna leave it there.
Are there any more, any further comments from any board members?
I just, for, for the benefit of our new directors and anyone who may be watching, also a reminder slash notification that, um, student outcomes-focused governance is something that we voted on as a board and that we are a body of seven, um, not seven individuals. And once we make a decision as a board, that is all of our goals. Um, and I think so, knowing that we committed ourselves to student outcomes-focused governance and knowing, seeing more and more, uh, through the pandemic, the kind of systemic things that have been passed on year to year that we can stop passing on and do things a different way. We have this opportunity, if we're only brave enough, to take it and not allow ourselves to fall back into the status quo. And, um, it's, it's been very hard work and taking a lot, taken a lot of additional time on top of a pandemic, on top of existing board work to also try to change the governance structure. And the, the, I'll just take a minute to also explain the importance of changing the governance structure is because in Seattle Public Schools and maybe in a lot of districts across the country, um, the role of what the board is, what the state's responsible for and what the superintendent does have been super mushed and messy. And I think I've said this before, but sort of everybody's responsible for everything, which really means that actually nobody's accountable for anything. And that is what has led to us maintaining the fifth worst opportunity gap in the country for quite some time. And so I'm not willing to continue that legacy. Um, and I do think that student outcomes-focused governance gets at real data that shows us really what is happening across the district and where we need more attention and resources and how we make improvements towards serving our students who need the support the most. Um, and I, I just, with, um, directors getting in the weeds of staff work and, and the public making specific personal demands and not understanding the broader context, we, we just, we can't keep, we can't keep doing this because everybody's just kind of spinning themselves on a hamster wheel where everybody feels so busy and that they're doing so much. And then you stand back and you look at it and we quite frankly can't really show that it's been worth it. And so, um, in the midst of all the everything else, um, I want to say on record that putting herself out there and sticking to this is what's important and focusing on students, the way that Director Hampson has done, and not given up and not tried to be liked or popular, which may be hard for some folks and has led to, you know, very, whatever. Um, but when I sit up here, I'm thinking about how do we get what's best for students? And that continuation of student-focused outcomes governance has to happen. Whether or not, like, I mean, I don't think not being Vice President means, you know, that wouldn't mean that like, that would have to stop. But, um, just in terms of the way that we're structured with committees and, and what workflow goes through, um, different paths at this moment in time, um, the, the continuity to, to me and, and making sure that we stick really steadfastly to this path is, is important.
Director Song Maritz.
I just want to respond to, um, some of the comments that Director Sargu made. I also, as a new board director, feel similarly. Um, but I wanted to directly respond to your analogy of the CEO. Um, the CEO in this organization is actually a superintendent. Um, and so I don't see at this moment a change in leadership from that perspective. Um, I- Um, I, um, also don't respond what Director Rankin said is that, um, we work as a body and I have full confidence that, um, this is a body that is committed to, um, this path. And I am fully confident that regardless of what rule Director Hampson is, that work will continue. Um, thank you, Director Harris, for bringing to my attention some information that I was not aware of. Um, I have to imagine that this is uncomfortable for you to bring to light. Um, I think it's uncomfortable for all of us, but I am gravely concerned about the overhang of this. Thank you.
I have a question. Can you tell me what you mean by overhang?
I, um, I am uncomfortable putting somebody in a position of, uh, leadership, knowing that there is a lawsuit, an active lawsuit.
Um, still want to have comments. If we can regulate those comments to make sure that we're talking about, uh, the, the candidates and how we can proceed, please do. And so I want to still keep it open for, for comments, uh, if there are, if there are still some comments.
So Director Song Maritz, I, my analogy was not about Seattle Public Schools. It was about the president of the board. And I guess a better analogy would be I'm on other boards and the president does not turn over every year. I would not be a part of any board knowingly. And I didn't, I mean, this is different, right? As an elected official, but I still maintain that having, and this is not about Director Rivera Smith or Director Hampson. This is about leadership. This is about leadership and continuity of leadership is important, particularly in situations as we have here in Seattle Public Schools. I am a 34-year Central District resident. I am not playing games. I have watched one of the wealthiest cities in the nation have one of the most dysfunctional school districts in the nation. It's, Brandon said it last night, playtime is over. And I am sitting here trying to sort out what just happened. And at the end of the day, bringing up something that happened in the media in relation to who would be the best to continue the leadership, those are mixing causes. And I think it's unproductive for our board and it's absolutely unproductive for the students outside. That's who I'm centering. I'm centering them. I ain't centering none of y'all in this room. I'm not. And I'm, I'm quite frankly, a little bit frustrated. I'm about continuity of leadership when it makes sense. And what I've heard that's actually on topic and to the point of what the work we have to do, what I think I've heard, and someone correct me, is that Brandon and Chandra have taken, Director Hershey and Director Hampson have taken sort of the, the reins of leadership for what is going to make things better for our students. If I'm wrong about that, somebody correct me. I think as a board, we need to have a no-meeting meeting about how we're all going to work together. I, because I'm not, I'm not going to sit up here and perform for people in the audience or people on video. We are about the business of students. We cannot be about conflict. And, and Director Rivera Smith has not said anything conflicting and these two have actually complemented one another. But here we sit, trying to defend nominations. And I go back to, we should not be turning over president and vice president every year. It's not good for governance and it's not good for our students.
Director Hershey?
No, I was just saying, I believe it's appropriate to move.
Thank you.
I don't want to, I don't want to silence anyone if one has anything else they need to say. The sake of getting out to the students, I think it's appropriate that.
Ms. Wilson Jones, please call the roll for the vote for Director Rivera Smith.
Director Hampson? Director Harris? President Hershey?
Oh, sorry, I'll come back around to, um, I'm doing it out of order.
Director Rankin? Director Rivera Smith? Director Sarge? Director Song Maritz?
Aye.
President Hershey?
Nay.
The nomination of Rivera Smith was by a vote of, um, three yes to three no with one abstention.
Ms. Wilson Jones, I think we go to the second one and then if we have enough on the second one, then we come back. So I don't know if it failed yet. Is that correct?
Um, I, I think we need to get to four votes, so we will, I will call it again if we don't make it through to the next one.
All right. Ms. Wilson Jones, please, uh, call the roll for the vote for Director Hampson.
Director Hampson? Director Harris? Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Rivera Smith?
Nay.
Director Sarge? Director Song Maritz? President Hershey?
Aye.
The nomination of Director Hampson is approved by a vote of four yes to three
Congratulations on your election as Vice President, Director Hampson. We are going to take a two-minute recess and we'll be right back. Thank you. Executive Committee. Are there any nominations for Member at Large? Director, President Hershey?
I proudly nominate Director Sarge.
I second that nomination.
Um, in the spirit of continuity of leadership, I will self-nominate myself for Member at
We're still entertaining nominations? Not yet. If there are no more nominations, I close the nomination for Member at Large. Would any directors like to make any comments at this time? Director Rivera, I missed, Director Rankin?
Leslie Liza Lisa, Rivera Rankin. Um, uh, I just wanted to take a second to say again, for our new directors and anyone who may be watching, Member at Large is the third member of the executive committee. We as directors can all attend and participate in any committee meeting. Um, and it's just, we each are going to have committee assignments and there's a chair of the committee and then two other members. Um, but because it's a, because all of our meetings are publicly noticed, um, the OPMA laws of having more than four or more are Open Public Meeting Act, sorry, uh, more acronyms. Um, the, the rules that, you know, keep us from discussing things in groups are, that's if it's outside of the public eye. So just to say that Member at Large is, I, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, it, it's just sort of another title for the third person of the executive committee. There's not specific duties for Member at Large. It would just be expected to attend, um, and Lisa has been Member at Large, as you could say, um, expected to attend that meeting, um, as the third, the third member, as we are all expected to be part of one or more committees.
Director Harris?
Thank you. Since you called me out, uh, an executive committee member at large puts in, to do the job right, a great deal of work and time. And the important part of that is the vote. We can all attend any meeting that we like. But when it comes to setting agendas, when it comes to setting priorities, when it comes to, um, I'll go back to the word we've heard a lot about, continuity, um, it's an important vote. There's three members, two carries it, and, um, nobody has ever tried to shut anybody up, that's for darn sure, if folks know folks on this dais. But, um, it does take a good bit of time and those meetings are held in the daytime to where it is very difficult and takes understanding from one's employers to give that time during the daytime as opposed to the end of the day. Those meetings can be changed depending on the individual committee folks, uh, needs, wants, et cetera. But executive committee necessarily has a great deal of staff, senior staff at those meetings reporting. It's an important election because of that vote. Enough said. Thanks.
Director Rivera Smith?
Thank you. Um, I, again, like, I, I hearing a lot about this continuity of leadership and I'm like, okay, well then maybe I should do Member at Large again. And I'm happy to do that because I, I have enjoyed my opportunity to be there. Um, I have, um, I'm there anyways because I attend meetings, but it's, it's great to have the voice and the vote in there and I, I appreciate that, um, that, again, I've been there with two strong leaders, so, you know, who definitely, um, brought a lot of things to the table there. And I feel like, you know, I hope I've contributed to those conversations. I think I have and I think that, um, I, I'm prepared to keep doing that. And, and as you do, both of you, you know, get more comfortable and learn more about this, I think either of you would be grateful for it, um, or for any other, um, executive job you're looking at, you know? And I, you know, I'm, again, like, I know you haven't been here that long and I'm sure you would do, you know, I mean, there's a, like, the vice president always says, like, the duties are preside. Well, Member at Large duty is basically second the motions. That's like the only written duty, right? But that's not all it is. It is, it is more than that and it's what you want to make it. So I've made it, you know, for me, uh, being present and being present, not president, being present, um, and being, you know, um, being thoughtful with the actions and, and updates that come forward in that committee. Um, they are, you know, I, I used to even fill in when Director Harris was Member at Large, if she couldn't make it there, I was there for those times. So, um, you know, it's, it's been an honor to be on it and I would be honored to continue. Thank you.
Director Sarge?
So for those of you in the audience, that was a look of surprise. I was not expecting that nomination. Um, and I want to, um, acknowledge that the vote of confidence by the nomination, um, says something. I'm, I don't necessarily know what. Um, I mean, I mean, it's probably people see something that I might be able to contribute. To, uh, Director Harris's comment, I, you know, I happen to be able to set my own schedule and that does not mean that I'm the best person for this job. But I am elected to school board. Your King County government understands what that means the same way it understands what it means for Dow Constantine when he takes on other roles that are outside of his job title as county executive. Um, and I'll close my comments with, I wish the students in the room could vote, um, because Member at Large is, you know, I see that as representing a larger constituency of people, you know, not just the students who are here from Nova, um, that are one of the schools that happens to be down the street from my house. that are one of the schools that happens to be down the street from my house. And so I just want to acknowledge them in the room. We need to figure out ways to engage student voice. They, if we believe they are our future, they should have voting power in some cases, and they don't have voting power, because they're not 18, or most of them are not 18. So, I'm not going to slap Director Hersi and Hampson in the face by saying, no, I don't want to do this, and I will be satisfied with whatever the outcome is.
So let me be clear. I did not know that Director Rivera Smith was interested in running for Member at Large. So, this, OPMA is a thing. We cannot have these types of conversations. So, I am going to formally rescind my nomination.
We are, I've lost control. I've lost complete control, no. Director Rivera Smith, please.
This is why everyone needs theater training. This is why arts education is so important. Go with the flow.
All right, let's, let's get, let's get back to a simplest order. More comments, please, comments. And this is around the nominations of Sargiu and Rivera Smith. Now, what I don't know is how to formally rescind the nomination. So I'm, I'm looking for counsel on that. Yes, please.
I, I seconded the nomination. I also did not. Puzzle pieces, right? We got committees still to figure out. There's only so many of us, and there's actually quite a bit of work, and it, work is very hard to share. The, my rationale for the second is that I, I'm trying to stay as consistent with our strategic plan as possible in all spaces. And I, I spoke heavily last night to the importance of representation on the actual impact on, on students, and, and there's data to show that. So it's not that the impact of Lisa Rivera Smith continuing on that is, you know, for me, it is about the very specific work of shifting our model. Continuity is a, is a thing. Skills are a thing. Knowledge is a thing. Leadership ability is a thing. They all go into what matters in terms of those contributions. And so my seconding of Director Hersi's motion has to do with the fact that I, I think that you would be a really critical contributor on the Executive Committee, which is where all the agendas are set for meetings, and where the bulk of the governance structural work happens. And I've heard you voice considerable commitment to that throughout your campaign and in conversations with you. And it's, that's my rationale. So, it's, it's not coming out of, out of nowhere, and it's not to not, I'd be happy to have Director Rivera Smith also continue on there. It's, yeah, again, it's really consistent with the strategic plan from my standpoint.
Excuse me, General Counsel Mnaver, we, my specific request is, how would we go about withdrawing a nomination?
So because the nomination was seconded, even though that's generally not the process we use, it's the one we've been using tonight, that puts the nomination on the, on the table. And so simply having the person who moved it forward rescind it doesn't, wouldn't take it off. Director Sargiu could decline the nomination. But other than that, once it's been seconded, it's on the table for a board vote. And so either it would be declined, or it proceeds to a vote. Does that answer your?
Thank you, that's clear.
All right, thank you.
That's clear. We can proceed with comments. Any more comments? Currently, we have Director Sargiu and Director Rivera Smith as nominees for the Member at Large.
And I'm going to try to keep this succinct. I am incredibly excited to support Director Rivera Smith for this role. Again, for those of you in the audience who might be looking at this and saying like, oh, this is kind of messy. It is. Because there are laws to where we can't make decisions, right? It's not like a situation where we can call up and say, are you running for this? Are you running for this? Well, how are you going to vote? It doesn't work like that. And so we don't even really honestly know who is interested in what until we get here today, for the most part. And that's the way that it should be, quite frankly. Because you do not want us making decisions off of this dais. What I will say is that, yes, indeed, for the sake of continuity of leadership, I would be very excited to move forward with the Executive Committee that I have been working with for the past year. And I'm, I'm just excited that we have folks that are incredibly interested in serving in leadership capacities. I think toward Director Rivera Smith, she has shown great diligence in terms of not only filling in for me personally, when I have not been able to attend a meeting, or even something out in the community, but for many directors up on this board. If we're talking about working detailed technical knowledge, you're not going to find somebody who's got more of it than Director Rivera Smith. So I'm very excited that she is interested in continuing to serve in this capacity, and I thank you.
Any more comments? Okay, Ms. Wilson Jones, please call the roll for the vote in the order it's received for Director Sargiu.
Director Hampson.
Aye.
Director Harris. Director Rankin.
I have to vote yes for both nominee? Is there, do I need to?
We'll, I'll call the roll for one, and then I'll call the roll for the next, so it's each motion.
Aye.
Director Rivera Smith.
Nay.
Director Sargiu.
I'd have voted for myself. I did in the election. Aye. Oh, sorry.
Director Song Moritz.
Aye.
President Hersi.
Abstain.
The nomination of Director Sargiu for Vice President has failed with a vote of, for, sorry. Let me try that again. The nomination for Director Sargiu for Member at Large fails by a vote of three yes to three no with one abstention.
Ms. Wilson Jones, please call the roll for the vote for Director Rivera Smith.
Vice President Hampson.
Aye.
Director Harris. Director Rankin.
Aye.
Director Rivera Smith.
Aye.
Director Sargiu.
Aye.
Director Song Moritz.
Aye.
President Hersi.
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously for the nomination of Director Rivera Smith for Member at Large.
Congratulations on your election as Member at Large, Director Rivera Smith. Mr. President, I would like to report that the officers for the Board of Directors for 2022 are President Hersi, Vice President Hampson, and Member at Large Rivera Smith. I would now like to invite our newly elected officers, beginning with the President, to offer any remarks that they would like to make at this time.
First, I want to lead with the students. I'm taking President's privilege here. I know we're way behind on public comment, but I just want to say thank you for your patience, and especially for the students that are outside. I personally cannot wait to join you in some capacity. I can't hear anybody outside. I hope they're still out there. Listen. Government is messy. I understand that. But we have to set an example for not only our system, but for the students who are sitting here and who are in their homes studying right now, likely, way, way overdue for winter break. And so the display in the way that many of these conversations were had on this dais today, I am going to ask us to do some serious reflecting on it. Some serious reflecting. Because the way that we behave up here signals to the rest of the state about the functionality of our district. And I will not stand for more dysfunction. I'm done with it. So I don't know what it's going to take, and I don't know what it is going to need for us as a body to move past whatever personal issues might exist. And let's keep it focused on these kids. And that is going to be a strong request from me.
Now, I know we're time-challenged with what we're trying to do in terms of respecting the, the student testimonies, as well as what's happening outside. So I'm going to so trying to manage the time reflecting the students' testimonies, as well as what's happening outside. What's, what's happening outside. And so that will require Vice President Hampson and Member at Large Rivera Smith to hold on your comments that we can proceed. So, passing the gavel to you, sir.
All right, thank you. Okay, are we now at public testimony? Okay. We have now reached the public testimony portion of the agenda, but it is well past 5:00 PM. To keep the meeting, okay, these notes are, are absolutely unnecessary at this point. We will next go to public testimony. We will be taking public testimony in person and by teleconference today, as stated on the agenda. For any speakers watching through SPS TV, please call in now to ensure that you are on the phone line when your name is called. Board Procedure 1430 BP provides the rules for testimony, and I ask that speakers are respectful of these rules. I will summarize some important parts of this procedure. First, testimony will be taken today from those individuals called from our public testimony list, and if applicable, the waiting list, which are included on today's agenda posting on the School Board website. Only those who are called by name should unmute their phones or step toward the podium. And only one person should speak at a time. Speakers from the list may cede their time to another person when the listed speaker's name is called. The total amount of time allowed will not exceed two minutes for the combined number of speakers. And time will not be restarted after the new speaker begins. In order to maximize opportunities for others to address the board, each speaker is allowed only one speaking slot per meeting. If a speaker cedes time to a later speaker on the testimony list or waiting list, the person whom time was ceded will now be called to provide testimony again later in the meeting. As there is only one speaking slot per person, those who do not wish to have time ceded may decline and retain their place on the testimony waitlist. Finally, the majority of the speakers' time should be spent on topic they have indicated they wish to speak about. Ms. Wilson Jones, will you, will read off testimony speakers?
Thank you, President Hersi. For those who are providing testimony here in the room, please step forward to the podium once your name is called to provide testimony. There's a two-minute timer, and a sound, sound will be heard when your time is up. For those who are providing testimony by phone today, I want to first start, if there's anybody who is doing that, I want to start with an apology that we are having a technical issue, and our fix is not perfect. But we will endeavor to make sure that you are heard in this room if there's anyone providing testimony on the phone. The first speaker on today's testimony list is Dylan Carney Woods.
Okay, hello, my name is Rosa, not Dylan, but Dylan's the one that signed up. I am one of the founders of Students Against Sexual Assault, or SASA, and I am speaking on behalf of my peers outside. Survivors of sexual assault and rape are tired of outdated policy that breeds toxicity in our schools. The reality is, is that with the current policies, school is an environment that can only add to their trauma. We are here to say enough is enough. Our demands are as follows. The new Title IX revisions be passed. Improved and continual staff training on mandatory reporting in sexual assault. New and improved flash curriculum starting at kindergarten that focus on sexual assault and consent. Sexual assault therapists that, to be provided at every school that participate in sex education. You have the power and responsibility to enact these demands, to create an environment where survivors can feel safe at school and feel safe sharing their experiences. Considering that students spend thirty, thirty-five hours of, at school per week, the majority of our development is influenced by that environment. School has a massive impact on how we grow and learn academically, socially, and emotionally. We are, we are told that students come first, but our rights are violated constantly. Listen to the people outside. Listen to how many people need change. You can hear the anger and urgency in their voices. You have an obligation to support these people. You have the power to create the change that they so desperately need. You must not stay complacent. You must do better. That's it.
The, the next speaker on today's testimony list is Eleanor Noir O. Goldberg. Eleanor, if you are on the phone, give us just a second. We are working to make sure we can hear you. Eleanor, if you're on the line, you may start speaking. Eleanor, we're going to work to figure out if you're on the line or not in our tech issue, and I will come back around to you, apologies, if you are endeavoring to write testimony. The next speaker is Chris Jackins.
Name is Chris Jackins, Box 84063, Seattle 98124. On the election of Board Officers, four points. Number one, congratulations to newly elected Board Officers, and welcome to newly elected. Number two, the Board is continuing to pack the consent agenda, which removes these items from public board discussion. Number three, the Board is continuing to deliberately vote on the consent agenda prior to allowing public comment. This reduces Board due diligence. Number four, thank you for not putting the election of Board Officers into today's consent agenda. On the personnel report, six points. Number one, according to the December 1 report, for certificated substitutes, there was a gain of 79. For classified substitutes, there was a gain of 19. Number two, this seems like progress, but it still leaves the district far behind. Number three, according to November 3 report, for certificated substitutes, there was a loss of 285. For classified substitutes, there was a loss of 194. Number four, the Board did not discuss the personnel report at its November 3 meeting. Yet a day of school was subsequently canceled after this report, partly because of a shortage of substitutes. Number five, today's report also notes the separation from the District of the Manager of Human Resources. Number six, I invite Number six, I invite new board members to publicly exercise their curiosity on the subject, and perhaps the press as well. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Manuela Sly.
Good evening. Welcome new members of the school board, Sajiu and Song Maritz, and congratulations to the newly elected members of the executive committee, Hersi, Hampson, and Rivera Smith. My name is Manuela Sly. I'm the immediate past president of Seattle Council, PTSA. In my two years as president of the council, I got to work closely with both directors, Hersi and Hampson. Their commitment to centering students is the guiding light of their leadership and the reason I continue to support their work. I'm looking forward to more collaboration. But most importantly, I'm here as a parent of a high school student, actually, two of them, just like some of these kids in this room or the large group outside. These students deserve to be listened to, to be protected, and to be respected. The issues of sexual harassment, sexual assault, and rape culture in our schools need to stop. They need to stop right away. Comforting my oldest daughter when she shared with me that her best friend was molested by her basketball coach and attending the sentencing of the student that raped my youngest daughter teammate haunts me to this day. I don't ever want to have to do that again. I don't ever want any student or any family to go through that. This system is broken, and it's breaking our children. You have the power to change it. Do it. Enough is enough. Thank you.
The next speaker is Zidouen Aruan Crutcher.
Hi. My name is Zidouen, and I'm a freshman at Ballard. The summer before freshman year, I was assaulted by one of my best friends, and I was very affected and struggled a lot with my mental health. I was hoping he would decide not to go to Ballard, and I would not have to be in a constant state of fear while I was at school. On the first day of school, I saw my assaulter walking around, and I freaked out, and I went to the head office. They constructed an in-school no-contact order that they said they could not enforce and would not enforce. I was terrified of seeing him and ended up getting a court-ordered sexual assault protection order. It took many court hearings and lots of stress, but the judge saw that I needed an order. I came back to school less worried. The court protection order has extremely strict guidelines of when and where my assaulter can be at school if he's to remain there. Throughout the school year, me and my close friends have seen him violating the no-contact order. I reported it to the school and the police, but the administration has done nothing about it. They all know how strict the order is, and yet they refuse to acknowledge the violations. In fact, one of the assistant principals called some of my friends into the head office to make them sign no-contact orders against my assaulter. They had no contact with this person, yet they were being set up with extremely strict no-contact orders. My friends told me they were threatened with disciplinary action if they did not sign, and their parents were not notified before or after they had signed this order. The only reason their parents knew what had happened was because my friends told them. One of my friends asked the assistant principal if she knew of my situation and who I was. She was unable to answer and said that my assaulter was the victim because he was uncomfortable with my friends. My assaulter was uncomfortable because people found out he was the person who assaulted me. When I found out, I was shocked. Why was the school placing protections for my assaulter? Why were my friends being targeted by administration? And why was the administration enabling my assaulter? The situation has caused a lot of suffering and anxiety to me, and I feel unsafe and unprotected by the school administration while I get to watch my assaulter get protected. That's all. Thank you.
Trying one more time to see if Eleanor Noir O. Goldberg is either in the room or on the phone. President Hersi, that concludes today's testimony list.
Thank you very much. It is about 5:50. Considering that we are going to meet with our students at 6:00 PM, if I'm not mistaken, I'm gonna give us a ten-minute recess. We do not have much on our agenda for today. So let's take a... I would prefer to do that after, if that's okay. Any other questions? Alright, thank you.
Okay, uh, SPS TV, we are very close to coming back. I'm gonna give y'all like thirty seconds. Can someone confirm with me, or excuse me, for me that we are ready to go? All right, let's get it. Okay, so we are returning to, uh, board comments, but before we do that, I want to give a newly elected Vice President Hampson and newly elected Member-at-Large Lisa Rivera Smith the opportunity to give a few remarks. Uh, we'll start with Vice President Hampson.
Uh, this is a rough transition, but one that highlights ever so clearly why I push so hard for the focus on student outcomes, focus governance. It was the first time that I saw a pathway forward for a district, for a board in particular, because we have only control over ourselves and our work that we do together to focus on the needs and the outcomes of our students. And it's not my exclusive focus, but it has certainly become the guiding light and the basis in a, in a really positive way for the work that I do on the board, for the work that I do in collaboration with fellow board members, and I think represents the best opportunity for us collectively to move this board and therefore this organization forward in a productive way such that we are in fact about outcomes for students, about positive trajectories and outcomes for students. And I'm incredibly overwhelmed and excited. I, when I say overwhelmed, I automatically look at Julia and LA because uh, few people know the depth of, of the work like they do that, uh, this will require. I'm excited to continue to present it. Uh, I had the opportunity to do so, do so with CSEC recently, and it was well received. I think the thing that comes with that is the, uh, that, that gets the, the best reception is the willingness to acknowledge where we haven't met expectations, where we have fallen down as a system, or we have uh, all the ways in which we make our general counsel very nervous by making clear that, that we know we need to do better. And saying we do need to do better often isn't enough. We have to acknowledge that harm has been done. And when we don't focus on students, but instead focus on the adults in the system and trying to manage the adults in the system, none of whom report to us except for the superintendent, and even then on a uh, through a, a very limited scope in terms of our ability to collaborate with one another and, and our contract with one another and our annual evaluation, which is gonna get a lot more intense and a lot better, but I'm nervous and super excited about the prospect of really weaving this work into everything that we do. And I see, I talked to a board member from a tiny town in Washington State who, without knowing, instituted student outcomes focused governance about 10 years ago. And they, we were speaking for a different reason. They expressed to me how impactful it had been that they had finally seen changes and the outcomes that they were seeing with students, and it was truly exactly as described in student outcomes book, as governance is just coming to the board meetings, every meeting and saying, these are our key performance indicators. These are our goals. Tell us how you're doing on them with staff over and over and over again. And that's where we're headed for the new board directors is that we are working to shift our entire focus and our time together. The vast majority of it, the goal is that the, that time is spent talking about how our students are doing. And I'm so grateful to the students that are here tonight because they had originally planned to do a protest and, and rightfully so. They're dealing with significant harms. And they were saw the opportunity for us to actually come together on a different night and share space and, and share messages. And in that way, they truly are leading us in terms of the willingness and ability to, to compromise and figure out a way to work together. And, you know, I think y'all felt the energy of that out there. And so, um, so I'm ready to get to work for them and, and thank you for the opportunity to do so.
Thank, thank you. Uh, short and sweet. Thank you all for the honor of serving again on the executive committee and members large. Um, I do think it's a role that can be, um, it can be, um, made my own, I, I, cause it is still on paper, you know, it's a shell of something. So I look forward to finding ways to make that a, um, a role of service and of, of listening and learning and leading on this great team. Thank you.
Thank you both. And as President, I am very excited to continue working with both of you in the executive committee. We are now going to move over to board comments. Uh, just as a bit of signaling, I am waving my board comments. I feel as though I have spoken far too much tonight. Um, Director Hampson, do you have specific comments that you would like to make? This is also the opportunity for committee reports, though I'm not sure any have met. Okay.
Uh, they have not met the, I was just gonna say for the executive committee, uh, which is now President Hershey's, the next meeting is December ninth, eighth at eight AM. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Director Harris.
Thank you. Um, I'm excited to work together. I'm excited to be open with each other, to learn from each other. And also on my own time and my own dime, I want to convince all of my colleagues to help with the levies. I will have a depot out in West Seattle Island for signs. I will be waving signs at intersections, but no longer at California and the Spokane Street Bridge, which is the best place in the city because there's ivy grown over that. It is beyond critical that we pass both of those levies and as leaders again, on my own time and my own dime, I plan to twist your arm and feed you if need be, if you come out to help make that happen. Critically important. And as I was driving in, it was Dr. Jeff Dujin on NPR, and at some point, we need to have him and his team come to us so that we can celebrate and embrace that team with our healthcare providers. Um, I got pretty darn emotional in my last comments. And I don't take back a word of it. And, uh, this is about commu- community and we've got a new variant. And thinking back to January 2020, my, how things have changed. And I wanna get back to educating kids. I also attended, some of y'all have heard me talk consistently and passionately about the role of librarians in our schools and have heard me talk about my beloved Aunt Fran, who did live to 100. And we celebrated her down in Olympia a couple of weeks ago, and it was profound how much education meant to her. She was a librarian for her entirety of her career. And I can remember when my child wanted to be a teacher and she told her great Aunt Fran that. And Aunt Fran turned around and told her no. Because educators are not treated with the respect that they are due. And it broke my heart. So I hope to heck we can find a way to have full-time librarians as well as full-time counselors in every one of our schools. Because if reading literacy is truly part of our strategic plan, how, how can we have half-time librarians? I, I, it is cognitive dissonance. And I so desperately want to have in-person meetings again because I miss it and I miss the give and take and I miss the human element of that. And, uh, soon, 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 I hope. Thank you. It's an honor and a privilege.
Thank you, Director Harris. Director Rankin?
Thank you. To say that this has all been a roller coaster would I think be a pretty much of an understatement. Uh, this, this meeting itself and also just the last few years and, um, and even just this, this week, there's been, um, great high points and, and low points. And, um, what I am hearing from so many people, from educators, from students and other parents is how much more challenging this year is than last year. The cracks are really showing in, in everything. They're showing in us as individual people, in systems, in who we thought we were as adults, in things that students thought they could depend on. And a lot of them are, it's not new. They're just really showing. And all of the pretending that, um, we do and thinking that things are great in, in regular times. There's just not the energy for pretending anymore. And, and I actually think that's a really good thing because these cracks are, are real. And instead of covering them up, we need to address them together and do better for the students outside who are so incredibly, um, brave and poised and know what they want and and are telling it, telling us so, so clearly. And there are a lot of things that we know, we know this to be true. And as adults, I think it's, it's so easy to have gotten used to things being a certain way. And when you have high schoolers experience a lot of, a lot of these injustices for the first time and they're horrified by it, rightly so. It's a reminder that we should all be horrified by a lot of things every day and work to change them. And that getting, um, getting used to it is not, is not the goal. Doing better is the goal. And, uh, in spite of all that, the greatest reminder that not everything's terrible is, has been, um, doing sub-coverage at schools, at elementary schools, lunch and recess, lunch and recess duty. Oh my gosh, seeing little elementary students just do so great for and by each other. I was at Emerson Elementary this week and, um, was talking to kids handing out their chocolate milk and, and everything. And, and the kids were so sweet to each other and telling me, oh, she only speaks Spanish in just a, just a kind, um, informative way to let, to let me, to let me know and standing up for their friend. And, and making space for each other and being respectful about social distancing and following the instructions and, and also still having joy within it. I feel really, really lucky to have, and I'm gonna be at Lowell on Friday, um, really lucky to be having the opportunity to have the reminder that it's, it's not all the bad. And so I keep thinking about a Leonard Cohen song. And so I'll just end with a quote, which is, um, ring the bells that still can ring. Forget your perfect offering. There's a crack, a crack in everything, but that's how the light gets in.
Director Rivera Smith?
Thank you. Um, I'll just, I'll start with the committee report. As interim operations committee chair, um, I look forward to invite everybody to our meeting, which will be held tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM. It will be held remotely with remote access via Microsoft Teams and teleconference. Please, you can find the agenda online and that'll have the link and the phone number. Tomorrow's meeting, we'll be receiving updates on the 2022 policy calendar, calendaring process, on the drinking water testing, on capacity needs, uh, student assignment transition plan. And the BTA five levy update, we'll also be taking action on two items. One is the approval of a budget transfer and authorization for the superintendent to execute the guarantee maximum price amendment for the Lincoln High School Phase Two project. The second is final acceptance of our contract with Leitig Construction for Daniel Bagley Elementary School Modernization and Edition Project, coupled with the approval of a resolution to receive state construction assistance program funding, uh, also for the Daniel Bagley Elementary School Modernization and Edition Project. It's really more exciting than it sounds. I invite everyone to come and join in, um, to the meeting. And that is what we'll be doing in the morning. I also wanna speak to our public testimony speakers we had earlier today, our students from Ballard and all the students outside who we had the honor of visiting with during recess. And just say how, how inspiring and how, and just an I am of all that they brought to us today. And every day that they struggle to reach out to us, cause it's not easy. And as we all, I'm sure we all remember being students and, and could you imagine doing what they're doing right now? Um, you know, it's, it's really, they are the leaders we need right now. We talk about us being leaders, but they are really the leaders we need to be hearing from and listening to. And, um, I look forward to doing more of that as, whenever we can. And whenever they come to speak with us. And I, um, appreciate that they were here tonight and that, um, that they got our attention, right? And, um, that, and I know that, that was where, as we work to center our students. That we'll be listening all year long and all our years here on this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rivera Smith. Director Sarge?
The question is not whether we can afford to invest in every child. It's whether we can afford not to. I said that quote last night after my oath of office. And I tried to go back to see how long it's, it's my, it's a, the sort of tagline, the end of my email, and it's a long time. It goes way back beyond five years. And it's a quote that has been a guiding force for me. And I think tonight's, um, activism that was demonstrated by our students is an example that we must invest in every child, in every way. I did not come to this board meeting expecting to share my own sexual assault history. And I absolutely did not expect to have the body response that I had. But, but I said to the, to the young people out there that they have my absolute commitment on this issue. Yeah, they have my absolute commitment. I, I, I didn't understand that there hadn't been action. And I'm new, so this is not a, a fault-finding mission. But we have to prioritize. We have to demonstrate that the, these types of situations matter to the adults in the room, in every room, whether it's here on the dais or whether it's, you know, in the principal's office at their respective high schools, whether it's in the classroom. Because if we do not, we are complicit in their trauma. We are actually inflictors of their trauma if we don't take this seriously. And that goes with every, everything else. You know, this is just one topic and they are why I ran. And I feel fortunate to have had that experience with them uh, as my first board meeting. There are lots of things I didn't expect tonight. And I am excited as one of seven to collaborate. I think I've said this to a couple of my other colleagues. I, I don't remember who it was, but we don't always get everything we want, right? Children don't get everything they want, right? Sometimes we get what we want and sometimes we, we don't. But there are certain things that we cannot waver on, um, that we must deliver on, that we must put aside our political differences, our religious differences, our cultural differences. You know, for example, in the case of sexual assault, it should not be acceptable. Full stop, period. So if there's a policy that needs to be passed, we need to fast-track it. Otherwise, we are complicit. We are complicit. Acts of commission or omission. So I look forward to collaborating with these other board members to do the heavy lift. We have lots of things to cover. And when we talk about student outcomes focused governance, it includes things like ensuring that they are protected, right? Cause what we know about trauma and mental health is if students' mental health is not well, they can't learn well. It's a fact. It's a, it's a, it's a scientific fact. If your body is discombobulated and in a state of fight or flight 24/7, you cannot learn well. And so we have to be paying attention to all the things that contribute to our students being successful and do what we can. So I look forward to working with my six colleagues to get, to get some stuff done with, with, uh, Dr. Brent Jones, to get some stuff done with the staff here, to get some stuff done with the teachers, with the principals. It's gonna take all of us. We all have to be on the same team, no matter our titles. We all have to be on the same team. If we're centering kids, we have to be on the same team.
Okay, and just for clarification, uh, Vivian, is your last name pronounced with a long E or a short I? Is it Maritz or Maritz?
Common question. Ma, Ritz.
Ma Ritz, okay.
Ritz crapper.
Fantastic. Director Song Maritz.
Thank you for asking.
Of course.
I wanna just start by thanking and congratulating our newly elected executive committee. I am really grateful for your leadership over the past year. And I'm excited to have the three of you set the rhythm for our new board. Yesterday, um, Director Sarge and I had a wonderful meeting with Dr. Jones, Dr. Pedrosa, Gina and Rob. And I wanna thank them for sharing their vision for their leadership. I also wanna thank our board office, Julia and Ellie, for making my first 24 hours go as smoothly as I can hope. And I also really want to thank, um, the students who came and bravely shared their stories with me on my first day. This is a day that I will not forget for many reasons. And I feel very fortunate, this is the way I'm starting my term. And I want to just echo Director Sarge and other directors' commitment to delivering on their demands. I, um, to be honest, I am most comfortable with spreadsheets and not speaking. This is gonna be a personal challenge for me. When you have not heard from me, it's probably because I feel that I need to examine the data, particularly disaggregated data. I need to hear from community. And my ask tonight is that, community, please, call me, email me, text me, come meet with me. I am here for it. I will not feel comfortable making decisions otherwise. So thank you to everybody here tonight for a great first meeting for me.
Wonderful. Uh, I know I said I wasn't gonna say anything, but I did just wanna offer one last welcome to everybody. We are going to be together as this board for two years. And we have a lot of growing together that we need to do in a very short amount of time if we are going to get everything that we wanna get done, done. So I'm gonna ask you, just like I asked my second graders, please be in a learning, a listening, and most importantly, a loving stance as we embark on this journey together. So there being, and breathe. There being no further business to come before the board. The regular board meeting is now adjourned at 6:43 PM. Thank you all very much. Be safe and wash your hands.